All right, let's call to order the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Pigley, Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda. All right, our pledge of allegiance, if you will look over Inga's left shoulder, or there she goes, Vanna Inga Fishman. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag of the United States.
States of America.
And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
And justice.
All right. Inga, do you want to see if there's any public comments?
Sure, I think we determined that the phone number is Becky from the Courier. But if it's not, it's star six to unmute. There's someone by the name of Lauren Cox. Did you want to speak during the public comment period? You'll just.
Lauren's with WCLO.
Ah, okay, perfect. Um, and then.
Doesn't mean that he can't talk, though.
But I think that's all of our public members, then.
So it looks like we will not have any further public comments at this time. So approval of common council meeting minutes from November 17th of 2020.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 2020-30, adopting the City of Milton 2021 annual budget. I've heard this 24.
Yeah, so tonight I have about a 40-slide presentation that I'm going to have you all sit through again. No, I'm just kidding. We've been through this a number of times. And, you know, we're at the point where we want, where we're ready to adopt the 2021 budget. And to do so, we need to adopt the resolution as we do every year. And just kind of wanted to hit some highlights, you know, really for Chief Rhodes, you know, because he's on with us tonight, too, and Lauren from WCLO. Again, this budget collects less tax dollars than we did in 2020. So we'll collect less money in 2021 than we did in 2020. Our overall expenditures are only increasing 1%. And our tax rate is decreasing again. So the city's portion of our tax rate that will appear on our residence tax bill will be smaller than it was last year. So those are all really good things in a time when there's a lot of uncertainty in the world. And with the economy, it's nice to know that, you know, the city is holding the line and actually decreasing the line on the things that really matter most when it comes to tax for our residents. No reduction in services. And, you know, we're taking care of our employees to the best of our ability. And, you know, when it's all said and done, I think this is a really good budget. And, you know, we look forward to 2021 for many, many, many reasons. But, you know, we're already, it's already shaping up that 2021 is going to be a great year in terms of economic development. But there's going to be a great deal of uncertainty in the 2022 budget process, as we've talked about a number of times, due to the COVID pandemic and the probable impending recession in the economy. So we're happy to be able to hold the line and actually decrease taxes for our residents in the City of Milton. We're going to do it in 2021 with less money than we did it in 2020. And, you know, still going to continue to provide the great level of service that residents in Milton expect and should expect because we have great people who execute those tasks every single day. So that's kind of the highlights. There aren't any lowlights. So, you know, we better strike while the iron's hot. I guess the last piece of information is, you know, we will adopt the budget tonight, presumably. And if there are changes to the fire department, joint fire departments, contracted townships, that will have to be something that's worked out within the construct of the existing budget. So what I mean is if there is any changes to the contribution levels for the City of Milton, that would have to be handled through a budget amendment. But it would not impact the tax rate. It would not impact the levy. It will only impact how we allocate funds within our existing budget. So that is still an undetermined variable, but one that is largely outside of our control, but one that we will manage responsibly if we need to do so.
Okay, I'll just go around to council members and see if you have any questions or comments. And I'm just going to do it based on how you appear on my screen. So you really don't know when I'm going to call on you, but Bill Wilson?
No questions.
Devin Elliott?
No questions.
Linda Clark?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say thank you to all of our city staff that have been working on this to get it where we need to have it, within the confines that we have, but yet keeping everything that we currently have as far as services and such. That's what our taxpayers want, and I truly appreciate that, especially since we've just finished this huge election. So hats off to all of you that have put your time into this, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa?
I don't have any questions either, but I would also reiterate what Linda had just said. Thank you to everyone that put in all of their efforts and their knowledge to put together a terrific budget.
Larry?
Hold on, thank you, I have no question.
Brian?
No questions or comments?
Okay, well, is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2020-30, adopting a budget appropriating funds, authorizing expenditures, and levying a tax therefore by the City of Milton for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments for anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries, and we have a budget. At least for right now, we have a, we have a balanced budget.
We'll always have a balanced budget. If we have to do an amendment, which we do periodically anyways throughout the course of the year, we'll address that when the time comes. And hopefully we'll know what the, what that final situation is come maybe December 9th? Maybe a little bit later?
We're flexible that way.
December 9th of 2020, I want to point out.
Discussion and possible action regarding body camera contract chief.
And now that the budget's set, I'm going to ask for tens of thousands of dollars. This, that just makes sense. So I previewed this for you some time ago. My memo gets into the details, but we faced a corporate buyout of our body camera vendor. And so our old body camera system has now been discontinued. And the purchaser, who is a company by the name of Axon, they are also the manufacturers of Taser, so they're a very large multinational corporation, is migrating our current platform to their platform. And there is some cost differential. We're going to be purchasing brand-new hardware, lots of upgrades, improvements in the cloud storage and management program. So the price came in a little higher per year than we were paying. Frankly, that's why we liked our old plan as much as we did, because it was pretty cheap. But now we're moving into this new plan, and we worked through some various permutations of a contract and what the numbers would look like. And we were able to whittle down all of the, all of the wants versus needs and got it as cheap as we can. And we were able to work out a five-year contract with them. We get automatic hardware upgrades every two and a half years. So at the 2.5-year point and the five-year point, we will get brand-new cameras that comes along with the program. We were trying to figure out the most economic way to do a five-year contract with the increases that we're seeing in a per-year cost. And it came at a very good time. We asked them what sorts of discounts we could get if we were to pay the entire five years upfront. 2020, from a budget standpoint, ended differently than we thought it was going to, obviously, as much of our year has. And so there have been savings that the police department has had and some other departments have had as well, that we didn't, we didn't utilize a lot of our training budget. We were really low on overtime and part-time costs because people weren't picking vacations and going places. So we have some savings within our budget to put towards that cost of an upfront for a five-year contract. Axon said they would give us a 5% discount should we do that. Discuss that with Dan. He thought the numbers made sense. As he likes to state, he can't get a 5% return on any sort of investments right now. So he was pretty happy with that number. However, coming to you tonight, sandwiched in between a budget process and a fire department allocation, we were uncomfortable bringing to you a $50,000 expenditure tonight. So instead, what we're proposing, if you would agree to it, is that we pay a portion of that $50,000, $14,000 yet in 2020, with the remainder paid off in the first quarter of 2021, once we know better what our final numbers look like from the 2020 budget. Again, we think the money is going to be there, but we didn't want to have to guess. So now we'll, we'll know for sure before we make the second payment. The other little piece of this is, is our insurance company, Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, we always call it CivMIC. They have an annual grant program for initiatives that take place within their organizations. We've applied for a $5,000 grant to go toward the 2020 payment for the, for the new program. That will help defray some of that cost. That's another reason why I'm bringing this to you now in December, because that grant has a deadline at the end of the month. So we want to try to squeeze the application in quickly to try to get that money if we can. And that's about it. I'm willing to take any questions if you have any.
Brian, do you have any questions or comments for the chief?
Questions or comments, make sense.
Larry?
Just a quick question, chief. It sounds like we're going to get that, we're going to be treated as if we're making the full payment right away, basically.
Correct, yeah. When, when I, we first negotiated, it was all the entire amount in one payment upfront. And then we reached out to them with kind of what our presentation wanted to look like tonight, and they agreed to honor that 5% discount, even though we're splitting that into a couple of payments.
Thank you.
Teresa?
No questions, thank you.
Linda? You're on mute, you're on mute.
Sorry, no questions. I think that it's actually a good idea to do this with the leasing, not only for the reasons that you gave us, but technology is changing so quickly. I just feel like that's also something that we have to keep in mind, and thank you.
And that's one of the nice things about the structure of their program is if they release a brand-new camera with all sorts of improvements, either at the 2.5-year mark or the five-year mark, we have already paid for those. And so it's no additional cost to get a next generation of camera within our contract. So that was something else that made it attractive to us.
Devin?
I don't have any questions, it sounds great.
Bill?
No questions.
Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion to, how should I say it? To proceed with the actions regarding the body camera contract.
There's a motion and a second, Mark, is that, is that?
He's looking like, he's looking like maybe not.
Not quite sure what the motion means. As I understand it, the proposal is to approve the Axiom contract and to authorize payment of $14,000 in 2020 with a review of payment of the balance by, I can't remember the date in 2021, Scott. What's the, what's the drop?
March 1st.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, so that would be, again, the, who, I think intended your motion is to authorize entering into the contract with Axiom to, to pay and to pay $14,000 in 2020 and to review payment of the balance by March 1st, 2021. I think that's what you're looking for, right, chief?
Yes, thank you.
And Larry, you're good with that?
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. When do you get the new cameras?
Well, I'll find out. I'm going to talk to our sales rep to see. They, they are very busy, and manufacturing has been difficult in 2020. So hopefully there won't be too much lag time, but I'm going to get started with him right away tomorrow, and we'll get things going.
All right, thanks. Next item is discussion and possible action regarding an addendum, number one, to the City of Janesville Fire Department and Milton Joint Fire Department Intergovernmental Shared Administration, which for those of you that are on the Fire Commission, at that meeting, the Fire Commission authorized Bill and
John Jennings.
John, to make some very minor wording changes to the addendum that was presented to the Fire Commission and to proceed with presenting this addendum to the respective municipalities. So we have this on our agenda tonight for your review and action on it. And Chief Rhodes is here, and chief, I don't know if you want to just make a few comments. I know you've looked this over. And then if we have any questions from council members, we can do that after Chief Rhodes has some comments, if he has some comments.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak on this addendum. This is basically, essentially updating our current shared services agreement with the, the City of Milton and the town of Milton with the City of Janesville for fire, fire services for sharing those resources. This addendum really focuses on starting to really work a little bit harder together and a little bit more creating or causing more of functional consolidate, a functional merger of common resources, administrative functions, redundant tasks that both departments currently conduct. And so it's a move to try to really enhance our current services. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Devin, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time, though.
Bill?
I can address the items that got changed from the Fire Commission. There were changes in a couple of items in number nine. It sort of made it a little bit clearer that what we're talking about is kind of the operational command of the department. In number 10, there was a concern about sort of unlimited budgetary, which really wasn't the intent of the original. So it now says allocated finances. So kind of a limiter in terms of what we're talking about is the chief would have that latitude within the amount that's allocated. In number 12, the primary change, again, kind of clarification, the word departmental got added to say that what's being spoken of here is departmental authority. And then finally, in number 20, that was, that's a little vaguer. That was, I think, John's primary issue. And it simply says short-range goals and long-term plans of the parties. And that was to clarify that the final decision hadn't been made on a merger yet. So those are the changes that were made by the attorney in the joint meeting that John Jennings and I had with her. And I'm comfortable with those changes.
Teresa, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Linda?
I think it looks great.
Brian?
No questions or comments?
Larry?
Um, I have a comment, I guess. If there's a concern on the part of municipality, let's just say the City of Milton, who's a partner in this agreement, this addendum, concern about operations of the department, does that still channel through the Fire Commission? Does the city bring any concern about operations that might be going on? Everything's fine now, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying if in the future, does this addendum allow that kind of conversation?
Just a. I think, I think that the, the answer to that is probably in '21, the fact that the addendum can be amended from time to time, as long as the parties, the parties being the, the city and town agree that those amendments should be made. So this is granting a lot. It definitely is a step towards the full-time department by saying we're going to grant the, the chief fuller authority to make decisions, operational decisions. Doesn't remove the Fire Commission. The original memorandum is still in place. This is an addendum to that. So that, that original document does include kind of the role of the Fire Commission. And unless it's been subsumed by the addendum, those items are still in place.
Thank you.
I think I've consulted with everybody on the council. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the addendum.
I will second that.
You, you're muted, Anisa.
Oh. That's probably good. All right. There is a motion by Bill and a second by Larry. And is that specific enough, Mark, S?
Yes, that's fine. We're referencing addendum number one, and that was the motion to approve addendum number one, as I understand it. So, correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Hey, y'all can close off your cameras because the star of the show starts right now. I, I don't know if he has a soundtrack like I did, so I'm not sure if it'll be as cool as my dance party, but, but we'll give, we'll give him a shot. Number nine, discussion and possible action regarding general engineering consulting services.
All right, so this is the annual contract that we have with our engineering consultant, Baxter Woodman. Previously, it was a fixed amount at a reduced rate. Currently, it's just going to be, for this, this coming year, it'll be open-ended, and it won't be at the reduced rate any longer. All right, I would expect we're going to see a lot less need for this, these, these specific services, which this work order is for cases where there's not specific projects or tasks and for different staff to call on engineering services as needed. I wouldn't be able to provide.
Are there any questions about this, Teresa?
No.
Linda?
No.
Bill?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Brian?
Nope.
Larry?
Mark, just for clarification for the public, could you give an example of what type of service this might fall under, if you will, or where?
Sure, so as an example, let's say we're looking at a different, or different project possibilities, and there's some items that are, require expertise that I may not have in the engineering field. Maybe something at the wastewater treatment plant, stormwater type issue. You know, I have general knowledge of a lot of those things, but if it gets into the real specifics, I may not be able to answer those questions. We would have to use other services. And, and as the other work orders on this agenda provide for specific projects, if it was a large enough item, we would, we would come forward with a specific project. So these are, this work order is really for small amounts of time that it just wouldn't be, I guess, it's just not as easy, or maybe not the best use of people's time to have a work order for two or three hours at a time. You know, we're going to spend more time than that preparing it, asking for approval, and it just.
Thank you.
Anything else for anyone? Bill, did I, did I consult with everyone? I got distracted, sorry, looking at the memo. Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion to renew contract services with Baxter and Woodman with, how should I word with like a change in them? In the price there, Mark?
So we have a work order from Baxter and Woodman, so you could just, I think you could just approve the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for city engineering, general city engineering services.
That sounds good, that's my motion.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The next one.
I'm, I'm sorry, just quick, who was the second on that?
Ryan.
Ryan, okay.
All right, discussion and possible action regarding development assistant engineering services.
So this is very similar to the previous work order. The difference being that this is for projects that are development-driven and development-related. And there will be a lot of cases where the fees that are spent or charged by Baxter and Woodman will be reimbursed to the city. The city will ultimately contract with Baxter and Woodman for the services to aid in development or review of a stormwater management plan or other items that may come up. But this is specific to development-related projects and inquiries.
Brian, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Larry?
No.
Devin? Devin? Bill?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Linda?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for development assistant, assistance engineering services.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding engineering services for Cottonwood Lane Design.
So Cottonwood Lane is a street that has experienced five water main breaks in the last three and a half years. So it's in need of some work on the water main. The street, the street pavement as well is in poor condition. And the sewer, we could improve with a cure-in-place pipe product. So we're going to try to touch all the pieces of that street that we can and, and do it all as part of one project that will address water, sanitary sewer, and streets.
Any questions or comments, Bill?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Linda?
So will this project, will this go into a street project with curb and gutter and sidewalks and all that?
Yes, so the plan will be to replace water main, upgrade the sanitary sewer and any storm sewer improvements that are needed, and then replace the street pavement, any damaged or broken curb and gutter, curb and gutter that maybe doesn't drain appropriately, and then add sidewalks.
Okay.
That's the current plan, obviously. If somebody wants something different, we can, we can do that.
We can. Are you sure you want to say that? Larry, you got a suggestion from Mark here?
No, I'm comfortable with what's there.
Ryan?
No questions.
Teresa, did I get you?
Yeah, but I don't have any questions.
Is there a motion?
I, I will move to approve the project design for, sorry. Yeah, project design.
For the engineering services?
Engineering and project design. Is that sufficient?
So we're, we're approving the work order for the engineering services.
We could, the work order for engineering design services for Cottonwood Lane.
Yes, if you want to look at that.
And Linda, you're seconding that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding engineering services work order, East High Street Preliminary Engineering.
East High Street is a project that, there's some, some needs that we've known about for a while. Water main in the east side industrial park needs to be looped. The sewer could be extended east along East High Street. And with some of the potential development that's occurring, we just want to get the topographic survey completed here before the winter. It's information that once we collect it, it's not something that's perishable or we won't use. So in the event that we don't need it now, we can use it later. So again, it's just pretty much the top topographic survey for East High Street between Freedom Graphic Systems and State Highway 59.
Devin, any questions or comments?
No.
Bill?
No.
Linda?
No.
Larry?
No.
Ryan?
Nope.
Teresa?
No.
Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the engineering services work order for East High Street Preliminary Engineering.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding engineering services work order, water system risk and resilience assessment.
So this is a requirement of the American, America's Water Infrastructure Act. That was passed in 2018. Larger cities have, it has been implemented in cities with larger populations already. It's now time for cities of, more than 3,300 is the lower limit, to perform the risk and resiliency assessment. That basically reviews the entire water system, top to bottom, towers, pipes, technology, SCADA billing, and prepares an assessment that's required by the EPA and then used to prepare an emergency response plan that will also be required, I think, six months from the date of the assessment. So this work order is to, to perform the assessment work in a format that is acceptable by EPA.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
No.
Ryan?
Nope.
Larry?
So, Mark, in my understanding, then the EPA comes back within six months and, and makes suggestions or recommendations or?
Well, the EPA provides the outline, basically, of what they're looking for in the assessment. The, the cities or local governments or utilities prepare the assessment of their utilities. Some utilities maybe don't have a tower, so that part isn't necessary. Some has a reservoir, Milton doesn't have a reservoir. So that would be an example where it will be different for different communities. And then once the assessment is completed, that gets submitted to EPA. I don't exactly know what their process looks like. And then there's actually, it might even go to DNR first. The DNR does a lot of the management for the EPA in Wisconsin. But once it, once it's reviewed, and basically, once it's prepared, then we were given six months to, I think it's six months, to prepare that emergency response plan, also set as a requirement by the EPA and the laws that they passed.
Thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Is there a motion? Linda?
I'll make the motion that we approve the water systems risk and resilience assessment work order.
For engineering services?
For engineering services.
Bill?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding an engineering services work order, WWTP, aeration, upgrade, review, and analysis.
So the city had hired Baxter and Woodman to complete a wastewater treatment plant operation and needs analysis in 2017. Several recommendations were made from that. Some have been implemented. This is another one that was listed. However, before we can, or before we implement or make the improvements, I want to take a look at the operations and the costs and see, you know, what, what the payback and what the benefits are. The operation needs reviewed and go into substantial depth of the specifics of the improvements. So while it is something that is, is potentially needed based on equipment or age or operations, I, I want to, I want a better understanding of what that benefit is for us to determine what approach we should take. The different approaches could be blower replacements. It could be piping or valving and controls. So there's, there's a handful of different pieces that, that could be parts of this project or not parts of this project. And, and before we just say, yeah, let's do all of them, I'd like to know if it makes sense to do all of them or just a piece.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions, just a compliment, I hope, to you, Mark. And this is an example of the citywide effort at all times. But the fact that you're looking at it before we just jump in, I really appreciate that analysis of figuring out where to spend the dollars and where it's most effective for the taxpayer. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ryan?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
So for this also, I just want to point out, the work order was not prepared. So I will review the work order before we, we sign it. So I don't know if the approval wants to, you know, note that upon staff review of the work order.
So what are you looking for here?
Well, the, the approval would be, or the, the motion would be to approve the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman contingent on a review of city staff that completes the task described in the memo.
Is there a, a dollar amount we're looking for?
Eleven thousand seven hundred dollars is the amount they had given us. They just didn't have all the language reviewed by their senior staff. And if we want to wait, that's fine, too. We don't have to approve it. We can wait and see the work order. We can wait until next meeting if we would like, so.
Does, does holding up on the approval hold up your work, Mark?
No, I don't think so. It would just, it would just delay the start a couple of weeks, but I don't think there's an issue with that. It's not as if we have to get surveyed down before a snowfall or anything along those lines. We could certainly wait until we receive the work order. If it, if it does everything that, you know, we're expecting, bring it forward for approval at that time.
Linda?
I think that we should just take care of it right now. So I would make the motion to, to approve the work order, aeration, upgrade, review, and analysis upon staff review.
For the engineering services?
Yes, for.
Do you want to limit the amount to be no greater than eleven thousand seven hundred or twelve thousand or what?
Twelve thousand to be no greater than twelve thousand.
Or it would come back before the council?
Sure.
Is there a second?
I could second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding geographic information systems, GIS implementation.
This is something that the city's discussed several times over the last several years. I think different providers have presented different services. I guess in summary, this builds on what the city already has. It's information that will be owned by the city. So in the event that Baxter and Woodman and the city of Milton no longer decide to work together, the information is owned by the city. It's held in the city's account. It is a cloud-based system, so we would, we, we wouldn't necessarily have it on our server, but it's in the cloud. It's using software that the city currently uses and the county uses. So it's not, it's not a proprietary program. They're providing some training time for staff. The fee for the GIS implementation is fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. The, we, we would request additional licenses for the software. We, we already have some, but we would need additional editor level license and viewer level licenses. Those come at a cost of three hundred, approximately three hundred and fifty dollars a year for the editor and a hundred dollars a year for the viewer licenses. And then there's a second part of this, too, which is the data collection piece. And like the utility staff, for example, they're already using Android devices. So whatever apps that are created for the GIS, a lot of the information is just, is just entered manually. If they go and turn a water valve or flush a hydrant, you know, they'll report the date that they did that. But if we desire to collect other data, such as the location of a curb stop or sanitary manhole or, or other physical items in the field, we could purchase equipment to do that. That equipment comes with a lot of different capabilities and precision levels. What, what we're recommending, if, if we do decide to do that, is a unit called a Spectra SP85. And the cost for that is approximately sixteen thousand dollars. The funding for the, this item would come from sewer fund and water fund, and then also possibly from the Janeslo area MPO. Trying to think if there's anything else. Ask, ask questions, I guess. It's, there's a lot of, GIS can do a lot. Right now, like, for example, curb boxes are, are located with pictures, which pictures are good, but you have to keep them organized. And the GIS would do that. You could take a photo, tie it to a physical attribute in the GIS model and pull it up on the software. Another cool app that I've seen is, like, for water main breaks, you can click on the map where the break is, and it'll show you all the valves that need to be turned off instantaneously. It'll show you sanitary sewer flows, flow directions. You can track street signs with it. You could use it for trees. I think you could probably list a dozen things, too. And I don't know, I mean, I, I'm personally not super familiar with GIS, other than kind of what it can do. I don't use it a ton. I want to learn more, but it's something that we've talked about and it will be a benefit.
It also has emergency planning sorts of application as well, like doing city, city planning for specific hazards. And I can certainly use some of that data on the emergency planning side.
Yeah, and then, and then the work order provides for building some apps. And basically Baxter and Woodman, so that once they show us the path to do that, that we'll be able to do that on our own, too, in the future for other apps or, or pieces of the GIS that we want to implement. So there may be some, some services, if something were to get complicated. But once this is implemented, I think it's something that we can take, take and run with. And that being the utility, that being public safety or public works, city hall, you know, whoever, whoever finds a use for it.
And I, when we met with Baxter and Woodman to talk about the GIS concept back in, what was that, January, February of this year, when we could actually still meet in person? I, I think that the group of staff that was there really talked about some different ideas that they had to utilize the system in a variety of ways. So once we kind of get this base level done and we have a familiarity with the system, I think we can do quite a bit more with it that can be beneficial for the city in a variety of areas.
Bill, questions or comments?
We used to use this product a lot with our consulting business and the kind of stuff that you can do, you know, in terms of mapping, you know, demographics, layers behind all kinds of things. We used to use it for plotting library usage, for example. So I know when we had Ernie from the fire department on, they're using it to locate calls and provide us with information that we've, the fire commission has been looking at location of fire station based on some of that call information. And it's just a whole lot easier to understand when it's visualized, like it is in the GIS system. So I, I think it's great for us to get deeper into it and to have more direct access.
Yeah, the League of Municipalities has a lot of information on it, too, that you can look up. And they've provided, Devin?
I don't have any questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda? Linda?
Um, I think it's I think it's a great tool and it would be utilized throughout the city like everyone else has said. It's a good.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mark, I I think I heard right, but basically any apps we develop, any data we develop off the initial system, the initial software, if you will, uh, it belongs to the city, right? All of that belongs to the city. So regardless of yeah, regardless.
All all the data will be the city's and some of the data to start with is already the city's.
Okay.
We will be, because we have been slowly adding and implementing parts of the city into the GIS system. Um, and that that part will take time. That won't happen overnight, so it's not as if, you know, we approve this work order, Baxter and Woodman creates the GIS program and software that we need for our specific uses that we we determine. And then the next week, the whole city's on GIS. That's not how it works. But until we have the capabilities to to collect, store and manage the data, it's kind of piecemeal here and there, so. Once we're able to store the data, and then if we decide to purchase the the receiver or data collector, um, that's where, you know, maybe the water guys or the utility guys go out to do a locate and and they locate the the curb stop they had to find that day so that the next time they go out, instead of having to take the locator and the shovel, or it's in the middle of a s- snowstorm, they can take this GPS unit out and walk right to it. So it's it's it is a long-term thing, but it's also, um, it's it's forever useful.
Brian?
Sounds good to me.
So it sounds like it'll create efficiencies as we adapt and add the information to the system. Um, the the licenses costs, are there, is there a contract for them so they don't go up every year? Or how does that, the licensing work? Mark, you look like you're froze.
I I think he might be frozen. I, from what I understand, there isn't a contract or anything like that in place. I'm not sure um, what the history has been for the licensing, but we have had these licenses for the last, I don't know, maybe four or five years.
Yeah, probably, yeah. I I mean, I think there's a chance the licenses could go up over time as as, you know, technology increases and cost increase, but um, GIS has been a system that's been around for thirty years and most communities use utilize it um to a great degree, especially in the larger communities, and I don't think our license fees have ever increased in the time that we've had it.
I I couldn't tell you. I haven't looked at that. Um,
The MPO picks up most of it, so we don't.
Yeah. The ARC GIS, which is the the software program, that's the one that's used by, I don't know, I don't know another government organization that's not using ARC GIS.
Truly everybody, no.
Yeah, they're kind of like the Microsoft of GIS. Yeah, it's just there's really nobody else out in the game.
So what is the motion?
Uh, so the motion would be recommend approving the proposal prepared by Baxter and Woodman for implementation of the geographic information system. Uh, the amount is fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then if you, uh, to approve the purchase of the necessary editor level and viewer level licenses. And then if we want to proceed with the purchase of the data collector receiver, that would be a separate motion. Or part of the same motion, I guess, but it's.
Let's do two separate motions for those.
I was even that too.
Yeah.
Mark, S, is that what you were just going to say? Two separate motions?
Yes, that would make it so everybody could understand it, I think, so that would help.
Okay. Well, don't I'll jump to make that first motion too quick.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposal prepared by Baxter and Woodman for the implementation of a fully functioning GIS system in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and the purchase of the necessary editor level and viewer level licenses.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I asked.
Larry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I asked if we can put somewhat of a limit on the second part of that of that motion. Uh, you know, approximately.
So you have, was there a second to that motion?
Yes. Ryan?
Yep.
Yeah, Ryan.
Yeah.
I gave you, I I stated the motion with the fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty.
I'm talking about the second part of the motion, Linda, where where the other pieces might be purchased. I'm just wondering if we could put a limit on there where it would have come back to.
Yeah, right.
So so Larry, you're looking at putting an actual number in of how many editor level and viewer level licenses will be purchased, right?
Yeah, is that going to be too limiting if it is?
Um, we we talked, Mark, did you include a number in the memo? We, I know we emailed back and forth.
No.
Yeah, um, kind of what we had talked about initially here was, I think, two additional editor and two additional viewer, which would be approximately nine hundred dollars.
You mentioned four viewers in the memo.
Did I?
Okay, maybe I missed that. Thank you, Ryan. That was I didn't see it. I wasn't trying to be a penny pincher. I'm just trying to make sure that we don't all of a sudden get a, you know, big I don't want to limit the staff. Don't want to have a big bill all of a sudden either.
We're not, we're not looking for editor level licenses for every single device and every single user. Kind of looked at one for the utility, one for, you know, public works, and I think City Hall has one.
Yep.
And then the viewer would be something that would be more able to be used for just for anybody at any time without the editing capabilities, but again, to go look for something or.
And I'm not trying to limit, because we need those in order to use the software, so.
Well, we could certainly start out with um, one and one, I mean, you know, or two and two or two and four. I I didn't put four, like Ryan said.
Uncomfortable.
It's like, it's on the number of devices that we have, so that the devices all have the capability. Well, the devices that are used, I guess, but.
You've answered my question. I just was just wanted to be sure.
Okay, so are you okay with the motion and the second, Larry?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries, and then we need a second motion?
Yes, so this would be, well, if the council wants to approve the purchase of the Spectra SP85 receiver in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
I guess I can provide a little more. There there's a small table in in the memo. But just for reference, the accuracy of the lowest cost unit is uh, fifty centimeters. So imagine, you know, about two feet of accuracy, if you can, versus less than one centimeter. You can certainly do GIS mapping with a lower uh, a device with lower precision. However, my my feeling on it is if if we're going to spend the time to collect the information, I think we should try to collect the best information. Well, maybe not the best information we can, but the information that we need and will be the most useful going forward, because you could spend a lot more than this on a data collector as well. But, you know, I I didn't provide the fifty thousand dollar option because it doesn't do that much more for what we would need.
Okay, is there any questions about this, Bill? Devin?
No question.
No.
Larry?
No, I don't have.
Brian?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to purchase the Spectra SP85 receiver in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding lift station five and lift station six design.
Uh, the city had hired Baxter and Woodman to complete a sewer collection system um, capacity analysis in two thousand thirteen. Again, some of the, some of the recommendations have been implemented, many have not. The lift station improvements listed here are the uh, recommended in that in that re- report. Lift station five is located on South John Paul Road near Golden Lane. Lift station six is at Elm Street and lift station seven is at the intersection of John Paul and Madison Avenue. This work order provides for the 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 design work for lift station five and six as well as a a review of the service area and sighting of lift station seven. Uh, I don't know if everybody's aware, these lift stations are all located in the terrace uh, between sidewalk and curb and gutter. Um, not a lot of room for staff to perform maintenance. They are also lift stations that don't currently meet um, some of the requirements of the existing code and uh, and the DNR rules. So that's that's for lift stations five. Well, all three of them really are in that same situation. Again, this was for the design of five and six with the review of seven to try to determine if there's a better location and possibility of, you know, a different way to serve some of the area that is currently served by lift station seven. And then also doing these together, we're trying to or we we will be taking advantage of some some economy by doing design and of both of these, we can per- we can permit these and build them in the anticipated schedule that's suggested here uh, without having to redo permitting. Permits are good for a long enough period of time. So we'll be able to, you know, use a lot of the similar details drawing pages for both projects. So hopefully they're, you know, we're receiving some cost savings for some of that, too, so.
Brian, any questions or comments?
No.
Devin?
No.
Bill?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Is it infrastructure week? Did I not make, did I make a proclamation? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion would be um, recommending approval of the uh, work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for lift station design uh, in the amount of seventy nine thousand eight hundred, and then we would also need um, to do geo- geotechnical work, soils investigation of the sites to make sure that they uh, that the stations are designed appropriately for the soils that are on those sites. And the amount for that is five thousand dollars. So probably two, two separate motions similar to the previous agenda item.
I will make the first motion for the lift station five and six, correct? Yeah, this.
Uh, the station, yeah, five and six designing.
Five and six design.
And did you want to attach an amount to it?
Well, yes, in the amount of fifty eight thousand.
Seventy nine thousand eight hundred.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Does everybody understand that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Okay, that motion carries, and then the second motion?
I'll recommend approving up to five thousand dollars for geotechnical consultant services for the lift station design project. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose? Okay, that motion carries. So now let's look at our uh, October financial statements.
Thank you, everybody. For listening to the, I'm sure it was exciting stuff.
Well, we kind of thought we were getting pictures, but maybe next time.
They're saying it's a teller, uh, sewer televising.
Yeah, I've been watching for something exciting. I haven't seen a whole lot, I guess, but uh, we'll see what we find.
Well, check out TikTok. It might give you some ideas.
We hope Mark doesn't find anything exciting on those televising. We like boring. Excitement costs money. These are the uh, October financial statements. They just weren't quite ready uh, since the meeting in November. The second meeting was super early. Nothing terribly exciting, as uh, Chief Markord alluded to earlier in his presentation. Um, there's in, I feel like I'm on a broken record saying this. There's a lot of things that didn't happen this year, both good and bad from a financial standpoint. Um, and so, you know, I think we're going to finish the year in good shape. Hence allocating dollars today for body cams and not including that in the twenty twenty one budget. I guess if there's questions, I'll take them.
Brian, any questions?
No.
Larry? Linda?
Nope, thank you, Dan. No, thanks for the work.
Bill?
I'm good.
Devin?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so we don't need a motion for that one. And now we can move on to general items. Is everybody still awake? I feel like you guys are so quiet. Items? Yeah?
Um, I was just, I have a general item. I just wanted to um, remind everyone to take, drive around and look at all the lights that we have in Goodrich Square and in Junction Square and the Chamber's got a contest going on. Um, next weekend is Small Business Saturday. There's a lot of really nice things happening in a lot of our businesses, and I just want to remind everyone to get out and support your local businesses.
Any other general items? Oh. Linda, do you have a general item?
I just wanted to thank Public Works for putting all the lights up for us. They look wonderful.
Well, that made Howie smile. He hasn't been too smiley tonight. I heard he didn't get a deer, so maybe that's why.
Because Mark just spent all of his money.
Said, no roads get plowed this year.
Oh, you're not alone.
Don't publish that, Becky, please. Roads will still get plowed if it snows.
I hope so. We have that new snow file that we hardly ever use. Any, anything else? Okay, Steph reports. Howie?
Um, our new employee, Cody Price, started this week. So we're back at uh, full staff again, so. Otherwise, it's just been mostly just regular stuff, so.
Okay, Inga? Thank you, Howie.
Um, I I guess just a heads up, I well, during the last update we did of the employee handbook, we included a review schedule for sets of policies for a five-year timeframe. So I'm going to be taking the ones that are due to be reviewed in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one and do that review um, in the last couple of weeks of this year. I'll send it out to department heads to look at the changes, updates, send it out to employees to take a look at, and hopefully have it at council, either the last meeting in January or the first meeting in February. and hopefully have it at council, either the last meeting in January or the first meeting in February. So just a heads up, that's what we're looking at. And not probably any dramatic changes or anything, just making sure that everything's up to standards for legal and matching our, our current practices as well.
And our strategic plan.
Correct.
Thank you, Ashley.
Uh, nothing too exciting. We have been averaging about twenty-five pickup, curbside pickup the last six days we've been doing curbside, so just doing that.
It won't be forever, I promise. I don't know how long it's going to be, though. Um, I just think that Marky Mark has spoken way too long tonight, so we'll skip him. Is there anything else? Do you possibly have anything else?
Um, not really. Gainesville Street's pretty much wrapped up. A little bit of punchless work taking place. Sewer televising, watching that, so. Get going on all these projects we just approved tonight.
Okay. Chief Markort?
Uh, so I got some news last week. Our patrol lieutenant Kyle Johnson, who's a city resident and had been with the police department more than thirteen years, has accepted a chief job. He's going to be moving on to the Village of Roberts, which is near Eau Claire. A smaller department of about four officers and kind of his first step in, into the next level of his career. So we are going to miss him. He leaves with a lot of experience, but as somebody who's done this for a while, it's pretty gratifying to see somebody be able to take the next step and, and feel like we've prepared him well for that. Uh, next piece of information is shop with a cop is still a thing this year, although it's going to be sufficiently re-envisioned or significantly re-envisioned. Walmart provided a grant of thirty-five hundred dollars and we're working with the school district to identify families and students that we can um, shop with as same as we did in prior years, but it will likely be an online shopping event rather than in person. I just didn't feel comfortable putting officers and families together inside a Walmart, which was basically browsing because many of the kids came with no idea what they wanted to buy, so. Um, I think it's going to be safer to do it this way. We have some logistical things to work out to see how we're actually going to pull it off and we'll keep working on it. See what we can come up with. That's all I got.
Thanks. Dan, anything?
We have a 2021 budget. A ton of fanfare, which seems to be our case, which is good because that's indicative of the wonderful people we have, both in leadership and throughout the entire organization. And Carrie let me know today that she got the last of the special charges and all that fun stuff sent over to the county. So once I get all this tax information sent over, we'll be somewhere in queue to have the tax bills printed and hopefully mailed sometime late next week, I'm guessing. So look for them in your mailboxes.
Merry Christmas.
Happens every year.
Is that why Adisa started off with the song about crying?
Yeah.
I was just, you know, all levels, crying, dancing, we got it all tonight. Al?
As Dan said, we have a 2021 budget, so that's exciting. Um, you know, I was, I was just saying to Leslie just the other day, you know, I said, this is probably the second or third year in a row where, you know, Thanksgiving comes and you get into December and you kind of feel like things will slow down and it's the exact opposite. I mean, things are busier now than they probably have been at any point in the year, and that's good. I mean, that's good, that's exciting. Um, and you'll see a lot of that, you saw a lot of that work tonight on the, on the, on the agenda, and you'll see a lot more of it on December seventeenth, which just as a reminder, our next meeting is Thursday, December seventeenth. And we'll have a number of items on there related to development for projects that are, that we've been working on, some of them, some of them for a very long time and some for a really short time have just popped up. Uh, so we'll, we'll see that on our next agenda on December seventeenth. And you certainly should make for, uh, you know, an exciting year in 2021. And as I kind of mentioned in the budget presentation, uh, it looks like twenty twenty years shaping, or twenty twenty-one shaping up to be a very successful year. And hopefully that helps offset some of the challenges we'll likely have in the budget process. Uh, but you'll get a big dose of that in two weeks, so. Plan Commission meets on Thursday of this week, along with our Joint Review Board to, uh, review our newest TIF creation, which will be TIF eleven. And that comes with a corresponding amendment to TIF six. And that will really kind of pave the way for two new projects that'll, that will likely kick off in 2021. One of those, uh, you'll see probably on the seventeenth as well, so. Busy end of the year, 2020, the year that just doesn't let up.
Linda?
Um, I, I have a question for Al. I was just wondering, do we know anything about the apartments on Parkview Drive?
Nothing new, so the, um, they came before the Plan Commission back in, I think that was early October with a revised site plan. And the Plan Commission, um, in essence, kind of denied that site plan because that site plan was kind of, uh, well, it was certainly a significant change from its original site plan and removed some of the features and amenities that, uh, that were originally a part of it. And that caused some incongruencies with the existing TIF development agreement. So after that meeting, I've had a couple of conversations with the developer's attorney about those um, concerns, and they have indicated that they'll kind of regroup and, 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 uh, look for a path forward at some point. So that's, that's all I know at this time. So, um, at, at this point, it's, it's kind of either on hold or they're regrouping, which is probably somewhat synonymous.
Thank you. Any committee reports? I think I skipped over the committee reports.
Oh, well, that was kind of a committee report right there, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
But I know there was other committees that have met, so I thought, if other folks have them. Inga seems like she's got a committee meeting every other day, so.
No, I don't think any, any groups have met since we, since the council met last. Um, we'll have a Historic Preservation Commission meeting tomorrow night, though. And the plan is to start working on figuring out what goals are for 2021 for the commission.
Great, great. All right, everybody is all set for team building. Woo-hoo. Okay, so what gives you the most energy or excites you besides the mayor's dance party? Can't use that, can't use it.
My first cup of coffee in the morning.
Um, I have a dear friend who I haven't seen in a really long time, and he always brings that out, and I do in him, so it's, it's always a good time when we get together and can't wait till we can finally do it again.
Mine's probably a bit of a double-edged sword. It gives me the most energy and excites me the most, but also makes me the most tired and wears me out the most, and that is my kids. They'll make, they allow me to do the craziest goofiest things, and at every single night, I am exhausted because of it, which is fine. I'm sure many others can relate.
Aye.
Clearly it's not city council meetings that give you the most energy.
I'm going to say the Story Gardens project at the library. I think that's probably the, something that's given me the most joy over the course of 2020 is starting to see that project come together and see members of the community getting excited about it and wanting to be involved in the project.
I will say December with no snow has been really nice, so, and I just hope it continues. Every day above freezing is a great day, so.
We're not even twenty-four hours into it yet.
Nineteen hours and twenty-one minutes.
Just.
Thanks for the jigs, Howie. Thank you very much.
I'd say sunshine. Lots of sun.
I've been feeling pretty jazzed after, um, my friends of the Mount Public Library meetings and meetings with my teen advisory board. Um, those kids are pretty awesome and they're doing some great things lately that hopefully you'll be able to announce soon. So meeting with, with those kids has been very fun.
I am going to say music.
Remember to get your requests in early for the next council meeting. We could do Christmas songs, we could do karaoke, you know. I can't, I can't sing, but.
I have to say for me, it's my, um, holiday specials.
Oh, on TV?
Uh, well, no, I, I actually own quite a bit of them.
I'm, I'm torn. I've got two of them. One is my spiritual, my faith, my spiritual life. Uh, really gets me going and gets me motivated to keep doing what I do. But I'm also motivated by the people around me and my clients when they make changes in their life or when they move forward in their life or attack something that's really difficult. I kind of get fired up about that too.
I think, um, kids, for sure. You know, we used to have the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts or whatever come to the meetings. Um, even my adult kids are just so much more fun than I am. And the middle school kids today from the yearbook interviewed me, so that was really fun and exciting and they did a great job on their questions, so I think kids, kids give me a lot of energy. But I don't have to put them to bed at night either, like, you know. My kids aren't low anymore.
I do have one more. If it does snow, hitting that jump on the sledding hill and going about six feet in the air is really good, too.
How?
With the grandkids on three sleds, so.
There you go. So you're like all about no snow, but hey, bring it on, snow.
But just, just priority snow, so.
Be such an American, Howie. You want something if it doesn't affect you.
Yeah.
We call it self-centered snow.
Self-centered snow.
That is totally the.
Snow's the best one. It doesn't land in the streets. Is that what you're saying?
Just snow on the, on the hill, that's all we're.
Mark, Mark will be, Mark will be back next week for purchase of a Spectra snowmaking machine.
We've already talked about the retractable dome.
Over the whole city?
Yeah, it only opens on Christmas Eve when it snows.
Oh, let's just have heated streets instead.
Oh, that's part of it, too, so.
Well, we got GIS now. We can run hot water underneath just the streets, I guess, all year.
Mm-hmm.
We could grow crops year-round in that greenhouse, then.
Ah, there you go.
Sustainability, right?
Look at how excited you guys are.
I don't know what the ROI on that is because I'm sure that dome is forty million bucks, fifty million bucks, but you know, some corn at Christmas.
I, I'm sure that dome is quite more expensive than that if we're talking about covering the entire.
I would agree.
I mean, how much is a stadium?
Well, I wasn't going for anything that was engineerally sound. It's just a dome.
An inflatable.
Right, like the Humpty Dome was.
It has dual tennis courts.
So who do we have left? Brian, Mark, Mark?
Well, I'm gonna say a very geeky thing because it actually does excite me, watching, uh, the city's debt burden slowly dwindle down as we get closer and closer to 2026. I don't know why that excites me, probably because I listen to too much Dave Ramsey, but, um, yes, knowing that, uh, eventually we'll be free of, we'll, we'll have more choices once we have our finances in better order. I'll, I'll toss in another one bouncing off of, uh, Dan, since I got away with a cheap shot on the first cup of coffee in the morning. Um, one of my COVID activities has been doing a lot of home improvement stuff. I'm a list maker, and so we've got all these lists for, you know, the house a hundred and five years old, so there's always a long list. And, you know, I've been refinishing doors and that kind of thing, and um, reason that I thought of it when Dan, uh, was talking about it was this afternoon I was watching paint dry. It's, it's really satisfying, though, to do stuff and see something done. You know, so much of, of, um, of my work experience was stuff that never was quite done. Um, you know, it was always in progress and you were always working on improvement and, and so on, so the, the home improvement stuff is, um, you're going to make a door look better and you refinish your door and now it looks really good and it's done, so. That's satisfying and exciting.
I find planning with my kids be exciting as far as the home side and city council side. I actually find the, uh, positive, um, Friday, um, updates from Al to be exciting.
There you got a good chip in there. Ryan, you got a good plus in from Dan, from Dan and from Al, I'm sure. They're okay, Al. They're okay. I've just.
I usually find them exciting, to be honest, and they are exciting.
Are very.
So we got the two marks. One that's talked all night.
Yeah, just for myself, it's similar to what others have said, is that seeing the excitement on the faces of young people, whether it's Christmas time, birthdays, Thanksgivings, or like with my son, successful deer hunt, that sort of thing. It's just, it's just really energizing to see other people just finding joy in everyday things, so that's, that's what I find exciting.
Similar to Mark and Al, the kids and excitement, but a good night's sleep is always nice, too, so.
I was gonna say.
I was gonna say, let me know.
Yeah.
Well, just call me up when that happens and tell me about it. I'll, I'll, I'll enjoy hearing you tell me about it.
Hey, I think we got everybody. Good job, except for WCLO. What if it's WCLO? They might be sleeping by now. Yeah. Not too much, huh?
They know better.
Becky was smart. She liked, she took off. People know the game now.
So at all my other council meetings, there's always been a child that has appeared, but this one is just for Ashley. I have a new, got a new person watching me tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wow, I didn't catch that earlier.
There you go, Ashley.
You had a different background, Larry.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
My noise maker happens to be my little one that was, I, I didn't know if you guys could hear her out. She was whining outside the door or not, but she's kind of a little calmer now.
I heard some kind of screeching going. I heard some kind of screeching going on. I thought it was somebody's kid.
That was probably my kids. They've been loud, actually.
Might have been mine too, which is exactly why the cat is right here.
Okay, guys, good job. Next meeting Thursday, December seventeenth. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, everybody's muted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries and we are adjourned.
See you in two Thursdays.